Okay, we're all set.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the June 12th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Let me tell you how it works. You are obviously here because you are asking us to take an existing zoning rule or law, and because that particular law has given you particular difficulties, you want it changed for you. If the variance is granted, then the change will stay with the property. You can't take it with you if you move to another property. How we will conduct this meeting is we will, we have four requests for variances tonight. I will read the request for the variance, then the city will present the existing zoning law that you're trying to have your variance associated with. We'll show the picture on the screen. And then I will ask you to come forward and testify as to why not being granted this would be a hard difficulty for you. Then I will ask if there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this request. And then the board will ask you questions. We will close what we call the public hearing. Nobody leaves the room. We all stay right here. And then we will talk among ourselves. We may even ask you another, an additional question. We will come back out of the hearing, and then we will vote on the request. So you will know by the time you leave tonight whether or not your variance has been granted. If your variance is not granted, then you have the option of going to filing in the court of common, please. If it is granted, I would ask you within the next couple of days before you start constructing your fence, or whatever it is, that you contact the planning director, Heather, and make sure that you have the necessary permits. Now, since this is a quasi-legal proceedings, everything that is said tonight is recorded by our court reporter. We have the best one in northwest Ohio. So I'm going to ask you to be sure that when you come up here to speak, that you speak into the microphone and that only one person speaks at a time. And I'm going to ask you to give us your name and address before you start to testify regarding your request for variance. If you are going to be speaking tonight, I would like you to now stand and be sworn in, please. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
You're sworn in. Okay. The first order, we have a new board member. So on behalf of the board, I would like to welcome Ms. Crawford to join us. It's nice to have knowledgeable people from the city on this board. So, welcome. And now the next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the May 8th meeting. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes as mailed? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second? I got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Minutes are approved. Section B on our agenda is election of officers, and I'm going to move that to the end so that you don't all have to sit here while we go through an election of officers. So I'm going to go right into the variances. And the first variance request is Thomas Gurkin, 1011 West Wooster Street, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a six-foot-tall fence which would extend past the front-facing elevation of the principal structure on the adjacent lot to the west. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, section 150.79, fences, the following are applicable to all fences erected on all property except as otherwise set forth herein under A, except when fences are required by the zoning code for screening, a fence shall not exceed heights indicated in table 25. The next slide lists table 25 fence regulations. As you can see, under the side yard, it says six foot max. However, fences of more than four feet in height in the side yard may not be extended closer to the street right-of-way than the front-facing elevation of any principal structure on the lot or an adjacent lot. So in this circumstance, it does exceed the front face of a principal structure to the west. As you can see by this aerial view, this is a corner lot. It doesn't necessarily apply in this case, but we do seem to get a lot of those, a pattern of those requests. Again, the house there to the west is what you can see sits a bit off West Wooster Street, which causes that entire parcel to be in front of that house. Using pictometry, you can see the rear view of this house. So at the north of that screen would be West Wooster. And then here's a view of the side of the home there. And then another view, this would be the front of the house, to be facing south. And then here's a view of, we'll call it the other front yard there on the other adjacent street there. And then here's a picture of the front of the house from Wooster. And then here's looking in between those properties. So you will see there's a bit of an elevation difference there in this property. And then another view, a little closer up of the area where they wish to fence. And another picture of the other front yard of the home. It doesn't really pertain in this case, but just wanted to show you the layout of the property. And then here's another view of the property. And then I made this sketch for your file to try to signify where that home is to the west and the front face of that structure and where they want to put the fence. And then here's a picture of the sketch that was in your packet. We did receive one email from adjoining property owner. I gave you a copy of that. With that copy, I had included, first of all, a copy of the map of all the adjoining property owners that received the required notifications by the zoning code. And then I put an asterisk next to the neighbor, which in this case would be to the west that I've mentioned, who did send the email. And this owner is occupant owner of 1019 West Wooster Street. And then I copied the email, and I will read this into the record. It's from David Mauer, sent Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 at 9:21 a.m. It went to Jamie Komenick, the administrative assistant in our office regarding 1011 West Wooster Street. The email states, "Hi, Jamie. Thank you very much for the information. It is very helpful. Could I submit the statement below to the ZBA? As a neighboring property owner, I have no objection to Mr. Gurkin's request for variance. It seems reasonable, and I would ask the zoning board of appeals to approve the request on behalf of Mr. Gurkin. Respectfully submitted, David Mauer, 1019 West Wooster Street." An advertisement was placed in the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the ministry of code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met."
Thank you. Mr. Gurkin? You want to state your name and address? And then tell us why you need this variance change, you need this change for you, what the particular difficulty is.
My name is Thomas Gurkin. I live at 1011 West Wooster Street here in the wonderful town of Bowling Green.
Thank you. Please go ahead and explain your request.
I'm requesting the six-foot fence to allow my dogs to be kept into my backyard. I have a shepherd dog that I recently got, and it can already, if it wanted to, jump over the fence. I want to put up the fence to keep the dogs in and also to keep the wildlife out. I've had quite a few wild turkeys and deer just walk up and walk over the fence and go into my backyard. And I simply want to keep my dogs safe, and I really don't want deer giving my dogs deer ticks.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to testify to this? Members of the board, do you have any questions for Mr. Gurkin? Very quiet. Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia, for your time.
Shall we, any debate here?
I drove by. I think that fence is nowhere near the right-of-way, and I don't see any problem, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. I mean, the parcel has sort of an irregular shape, which makes it kind of an anomaly.
I think that acute angle there at Western and West Wooster, combined with the fact that the lot to the west is so deep, and the property owner at the time chose to set the home back so far from West Wooster is what your practical difficulty is under our language. So, and the fact that your neighbor to the west also is supportive, I don't have a problem with it, in my opinion.
Anyone else? May I have a motion?
I'll so move.
Is there a second?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, will the secretary call the roll, please?
Jeff Crawford?
Yes.
Is it a member?
Yes.
Judy Ennis? Judy Ennis?
Yes.
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sockman?
Yes.
Your request for your variance has been granted. Now you can keep the deer out and the dog in. The second request is Jamie and Christie Brandonberry, Three Ranch Court, have requested a variance to allow the construction of a six-foot-tall fence in the front yard, corner lot. Fence would be in the front yard facing Haskins Road, which would be two feet taller than the four-foot maximum allowed. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, section 150.79, fences, the following are applicable to all fences erected on all property except as otherwise set forth herein under A, except when fences are required by the zoning code for screening, a fence shall not exceed heights indicated in table 25. The next slide shows table 25 fence regulations. You'll see that the front yard, in this case, a corner lot, has two front yards. So this one has the Haskins as a front yard and Ranch Court. So in this table under side yard, you'll see the fence height maximum is six foot, and then fences of more than four feet in height in the side yard may not be extended closer to the street right-of-way than the front-facing elevation of any principal structure on the lot or adjacent lot, in addition to the front yard being a four-foot max. Under section 150.23, this is where we get that front yard setback requirement under the R1 low-density residential zoning. The minimum front yard setback is 25 feet. So that is established for the Haskins frontage and then the ranch frontage. So you can see in this aerial view, the property there, again, along Haskins and Ranch Court. Using pictometry, here's a view of the front of the property. Looking at the front that faces Haskins there, and then the rear of the property. And then looking at the side of the property. Here's a picture of the front of the house. And then here's looking along that potential fence line. You'll see there's a fence there now that's probably around four foot tall. And then, of course, that pretty thick hedge line there. This is looking down Haskins, so that would be facing north, north, I guess northwest. And another view there along Haskins and that shrubbery or hedge line. And then another view of the fence and the property there. And then this would be on Haskins, but then facing south or southeast. So you can see sort of a better picture of that rear yard. And then here's looking directly into the rear yard and along that frontage on the Haskins side. And then here is the sketch that was in your packet, so tried to highlight the potential fence, but essentially it's a pass, going past the house in the front and then along Haskins and a little bit curve there towards the front of the house is where that variance is required. I also gave you a copy of the map of all the letters that were sent that were required. And then I put asterisk next to property that's labeled number two and the property that's labeled number one. So we did receive an email from Seven Ranch Court, an adjoining property owner, and then 710 Haskins Road, a letter received by that owner. And I've attached those, and we'll read those into the record. So this email from Timothy dot Campezi was received Saturday, June 1st, 2024 at 1:07 p.m. to the planning department regarding Three Ranch Court zoning appeal. The email reads, "Good afternoon, Heather. I have discussed the potential fence at Three Ranch Court with Jamie and Christie Brandonberry, and I have zero issue with the height being two foot taller than what is typically allowed. They have two girls who play in their backyard often, and the sidewalk is very busy with various people walking. Also during the fair and tractor pole, it provides extra security for them. I have also seen similar fences at six feet around town. I have written them a letter to present at the hearing. Enjoy the weekend. Timothy Campezi, Seven Ranch Court." And then he lists his phone number. The other letter we received dated May 6, 2024, reads, "To whom it may concern, my name is Tyler Tucker. I live and own the property at 710 Haskins Road, Bowling Green, Ohio, 43402. My neighbors who live at the corner lot of Three Ranch Court, Bowling Green, Ohio, 43402, have my explicit permission to do as they please on their own property, as this matter does not concern me in any way regarding building a solid fence six foot high around their property." Tyler Tucker is the one who has signed. An advertisement was placed in the newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the ministry of code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed first-class mail to tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met."
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Brandonberry? At least we know how Mr. Tucker feels. Hi. Please give your name and your address, and then explain again what you said in your request.
Christie Brandonberry, Three Ranch Court, Bowling Green, 43402.
Jamie Brandonberry, Three Ranch Court, Bowling Green, Ohio.
Okay. Okay. We, the main reason for wanting this fence is just solely for, we have four children, two minor children, two adult children, and we just want it mainly for security and safety and extra protection. We have support of our neighbors and from keeping mainly people, keeping people out of the backyard, dogs out of the backyard. We have a lot of people that walk past our house with dogs unleashed very often. And Haskins is becoming more of a heavy, heavily foot-traffic area. We've got dog traffic, people lingering in the backyard. We've got a lot of people jogging, trash. It's becoming more business, less residential. We've got more and more things going on behind that parking lot right there with, from, you know, the farmer's, or not farmer's market, but the Bike Week and tractor pulls, and now the fireworks are now at the fairgrounds. So basically, when our girls or our kids are in the backyard, it's all fenced except for that part right there on Haskins. And so we just want to completely fence it in so it's safe.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who wishes to testify to this? Mr. Harold? State your name and address, please.
William Harold, 1030 Connead Avenue. Walked along Haskins many a time, and with respect to six foot, and for 18 years, we've lived on a corner lot and has its own sets of issues. Being a well-traveled street, both by pedestrians and cars, not ranch Haskins. To me, the idea of having a six foot as opposed to four foot, if there's no safety issues with respect to visibility, and in fact, reasons for safety, which they've outlined, myself would be comfortable with it being a six foot. Again, because of the location, and it would not impede visibility. I will miss the hedges, though. It'd be great if you could keep those hedges.
Half, or like, a little more, about half of it.
We're gonna keep.
About half of it.
Oh, really?
Oh, that punches it.
Those hedges are pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a hard decision, but.
It's, yeah.
So that's my two cents. I think that the situation here is such that it fits the very narrow criteria for allowing it. But I have come to enough of these zoning board of appeals meetings that I respect any decision you make, because it's a tough position you're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say, I also left out, you know, we are, we have the Bee Gees Liquor Store there, too. So especially on like holiday weekends, I can already prepare for others, you know. We have had people just in our backyard, and I'm always worried about on tractor poles, I'm gonna have somebody walking right in there, and I just, it makes me feel very uncomfortable. And the other part I want to say as well is, the hedge is actually taller than the fence. So the fence is gonna be shorter. This is, it's a weird picture, but this is Jamie, and he's six foot, and the hedge is eight. So we're actually taking it down and just securing it more. The other thing, too, is when we put the bid on our house, there is actually a 10 by 12 shed that was already there. But because we went VA, they did not want a veteran having that shed because it wasn't up to code. So they, we actually had to tear it down to close on the house. So we never thought when we put an offer on the house that we'd ever have a situation that we ever fenced it, because that shed is right there in the corner. So when our neighbor backs out of our driveway, I mean, you can see his trees, his trees and his, out of his driveway are much more, here would be the fence. It's already there. We just want to fill it in and just close it.
You might want us to pass those pictures so the board members can look at them a little closer, please.
And then I also have, no, no, I won't do. That was there. And then they had 48 hours to take it off the property before the VA came back out, because it needed painted and it needed new shingles, and they said that wasn't up to par, so they said you have to tear it down.
Can we go back to the picture you had with the shrubbery and all where she's talking about taking it out?
Thank you.
And also, I do have the quote also for, it would be with advanced fence. And I don't know if you need to see the quote for that. It would be a six-foot white vinyl fence. It would be a clean, bright, very well-maintained fence.
I'm sorry, I wanted to ask you, you said that it would be a six-foot-tall vinyl fence.
Basically. This is just, I'm trying to find a picture, a friend of mine, it's just.
Great, okay. I just, thank you.
Can we see that?
You can pass that through.
That's the picture that.
Pass it down again?
Yeah.
A friend of mine just happened to have one that, but it's like the one that's the white fence that's right up in the parking lot.
David, is that the one you want?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's it.
Can we ask a question?
Yep.
Okay. You said you're gonna leave part of the fence in. Is it the plan to build behind the hedgerow? Or build up to it, use that hedgerow as a barrier?
The existing fence, that white one, is right at 25 feet.
Right.
So we were just gonna go right up the middle, and then, and they said enclose it to where, how do you say it?
We're gonna take out half of that hedge. We're gonna come up to where our window is on our garage and then cut across and keep the front half of the hedge.
I think if you see this sketch, David, and.
Okay, I see it. I see it now. There you go.
And we're also gaining more yardage.
I was trying to figure out what they were gonna say on that hedge.
Make sure you talk so jolken here.
It's right there where they're cutting across. I was trying to figure out how they were gonna butt into, or where the fence was gonna go there. They're taking that part out and leaving that lower end, I understand. So the hedge will be on the outside of the fence, between the fence and Haskins Road?
We're gonna go like right in the middle of where the hedge is. Because we can't, we can't go, we tried to see if we can go, like even with the outside of the hedge, and we were told no. So we have to, because that's not 25 feet. We have to go 25 feet in, which is about the center of the hedge.
So if I'm driving down Haskins Road and I look at your home from the west, I'll see hedge and then fence?
Yes.
Great. First of all, thank one or both of you for your service. And leaving that hedge totally changes my mind about this, so I'm glad that you're gonna do that.
It is a beautiful hedge.
Yeah, it was, it was a hard decision, because we were gonna do it a different way, but we're trying to get as much yard as we can.
And not have, not have problems with people in the backyard and the kids. There are some eyes that go down, Haskins as well, and I've got kids out there, and it's just, it's not fenced.
Is there any more questions?
So, I do have one more. So it is 25 foot back from the, for the safety that we're supposed to have for the.
Oh, visibility triangle? Yes.
Thank you. That's what I meant to say.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it, though.
I have one last thing to say, though. Yesterday, at about noon, I don't know what all happened. I heard a blood-curling scream, and I ran outside. I don't know my neighbors very well. We kind of keep to ourselves. They have a six-month-old baby, and they have two husky dogs. We've never had a problem with the dogs behind us. And when I went over there, the mom was screaming, and the baby had been bitten, and the dog had mauled the baby. So they, you can see, I mean, the, I talked to an officer yesterday, they, the baby was taken by ambulance yesterday, and I don't know what happened to the baby. So these two dogs are a little rowdy, but, I mean, we haven't had any problem with them, but that, I mean, if one of our girls would have sat down on the fence and put their face right there, you know, that could have bit our dog, but I don't know what happened, and they haven't been home since it happened.
That's very sad.
So I don't know what happened to their baby. So that's another reason that I just want it all enclosed.
I think we understand that. Is there any additional questions? Not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, there's no additional questions. I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we can talk amongst ourselves.
I just hated to see the hedge go, and, because it's so beautiful, but since they're gonna be having half of it, still remain, it makes sense to, to allow that, I think.
May I have a motion, please?
I move the variance request be approved as submitted.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right.
Second it?
Dave? Will the secretary call the roll, please?
Judy Ennis?
Yes.
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Rod Noble?
Yes.
David Flager?
Yes.
Jay Sockman?
Yes.
Jeff Crawford?
Yes.
Tim Emmert?
Yes.
Request for your variance has been granted. All right. The next, the next one we hear is Emily Doster, 723 Kyle Court, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a seven-foot by 40-foot driveway extension, which would be five feet, nine inches wider than the maximum width allowed based on the width of the garage to which it leads. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code, section 150.72, off-street parking, A, location of off-street parking under number three, where serving a one-unit or two-unit dwelling use, a driveway may not exceed a width of 10 feet or the width of a garage to which it leads, whichever is greater. Here's the aerial view of the property. As you can see, on Kyle Court is on, it's basically a dead-end street with a cul-de-sac there on the end. Using pictometry, here's a view of the back of the property, so facing north. And then here is looking at the side and front of the home. Here's looking at the front. So you can see, in this case, the driveway width can be as wide as the garage. It's not, so it's not the 10 feet that applies, it's the width of the garage. Here's looking at the side of the property. Here's a picture of the front of the property. Another picture there, more towards the garage and current driveway. Another view of the garage and driveway. This aerial view is part of your packet. And then there was a sketch part of your packet showing that a seven-foot extension of the driveway, which would be, the minimum is actually 30 feet from the property line, and the drawing states that will be a minimum of five feet. We did receive, again, I gave you a map, we received two emails. So I gave you a copy of the map, and we numbered each of the required notifications, so you can see where they're located. And number five, we received an email from them, and that would be from the owners of 316 Haskins Road, and a copy is attached. And then we also received an email from 731 Kyle Court, and the copy is attached. However, they are not part of the adjoining notification. Wanted to make sure you knew that. But I will read these into the record. So the first email is from Kevin Gordon, received Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, at 11:28 a.m. to the planning department email. Subject, letter of support for Emily Doster's zoning variance at tonight's Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. The email reads, "Hi, my name is Kevin Gordon, and I live at 731 Kyle Court. I'm writing in support of Emily Doster's request for a zoning variance involving her driveway at 723 Kyle." I'm writing in support of Emily Doster's request for a zoning variance involving her driveway at seven two-three Kyle Court. Our street is short and narrow and it's important we have enough room to park in our driveways and not in the street, cul-de-sacs and/or yards. The Dosters have been a great addition to our great neighborhood and improving the variance would help keep it that way. My parents first bought my house somewhere around nineteen eighty or nineteen eighty-one and I've lived here since the spring of nineteen ninety-seven. I first lived here as a renter and then became the owner of the house in twenty fifteen when my parents died. My guess is my parents would have supported the zoning variance for Elaine Strasba's addition of her backyard shed many years ago at seven two-seven Kyle Court. Thanks. The second email is from Deborah Ann Titus Zapatelli. Received Friday, June seventh, twenty twenty-four at one forty-nine PM. Went to the planning department email. Subject, request of variance of seven two-three Kyle Court. The email reads, dear planning commission, sorry about that, zoning board of appeals, making sure I had that straight for the record. We received a letter from the department regarding a variance for allowance of a driveway extension for seven two-three Kyle Court. We have lived at our current address at, of three sixteen Haskins Road for forty-five years and our front yard and backyard are directly adjacent to four residences on the south side of Kyle Court. During our time here, most, if not all, of those homes have requested and been granted variances, whether garages and drives or a shed, which we had no objection to. We have no objection to the drive extension requested by the residents of seven two-three Kyle Court. The new residents have worked very hard on their property and we feel fortunate to have a young family in our neighborhood as our neighbors. It would seem preferable for them to be able to park their vehicles on their own driveway property as opposed to parking on the street in the front of their home, which may not be possible due to the cul-de-sac and the homes of other Kyle Court residences. Please feel free to contact us if you might have any questions and you are most welcome to view anything in question from our property at three sixteen Haskins Road. Respectfully, Deborah and Jean Zapatelli, three sixteen Haskins Road, Bowling Green, Ohio, and they list their cell phone number and their email address. An advertisement was placed, the newspaper of general circulation is required, a site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the Ministry of Code were posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed, first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the procedure requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Is Miss Doster here? State your name and address, please.
Emily Doster, seven twenty-three Kyle Court, Bowling Green. So I moved in on October of twenty twenty-three. In December of twenty twenty-three, there were no parking signs put up on our street. We also live on a cul-de-sac, so there's very minimal parking. I also have two teenage boys. One will be driving in September. One will be driving in two years. I can fit two cars in my driveway. I have a one-car garage. I park in there. I have two teenage boys, which means I won't ever be able to have family, friends, anyone else over because there's no parking on the street and it's a cul-de-sac. There's obviously no parking in the lawn. That's a city ordinance. So I'm out of options unless I extend my driveway.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who should to address this? Okay. We, you wanna come up and state your name and address, please?
Elaine Strasbaugh and I have the adjoining property at seven two-seven Kyle Court.
Okay.
Okay, um, I wanna give you a copy here because two other residents who do, do live on the cul-de-sac circle that it affects, they have said that they agreed, so I want, I gave you one so you can see their signatures and addresses.
Okay.
I have lived at seven twenty-seven Kyle Court, the property that has the adjoining property line to seven two-three for forty-three years. I am against the variance requested by seven two-three Kyle Court. Emily Doster is the fourth owner of the property since I have lived there. No prior owners, owners had a parking issue. I believe when looking to purchase a home, one should take the parking situation into consideration prior to purchasing. It is very apparent that Kyle Court is extremely narrow, fourteen foot, four inches wide to be exact, with no room for on-street parking available with parking laws set by the city of Bowling Green. It's also clear that prior to purchasing the property, the driveway could only fit two vehicles. First, I want to be sure that I'm understanding the variance plan. I'm understanding that the wall around the trash cans are gonna be removed and the eighteen-foot that she's going to end up with starts at that side of the house. So if that is true, all research says the minimum width required to park two vehicles side by side is twenty-foot. So I am questioning how the plan will even accommodate what is trying to be accomplished. My driveway is twenty-foot wide and even with parking each of my two vehicles, which I own on either edge of my drive, I cannot open the doors between the vehicles fully. Plus, the Columbia gas meter is also behind that wall that I'm hearing maybe being removed and it's going to narrow the space. My gas meter sticks out twenty-four inches. It was moved there to meet the fire code a couple of years ago so that it can be seen by the street. It's like a new law in the city. And practically everyone on the street had to have theirs moved by the gas company about two years ago. Widen the driveway to extend five foot, nine inches past the garage will take from the appearance of my property. It will be taking the existing grass perimeter from approximately twelve feet to approximately six foot in width. This could affect my home value if I were to sell. Allowing, it will also allow for additional parking, which will increase the amount of vehicle traffic and noise level. I also have a big additional concern not pointed out in the variance. Where exactly does the forty-foot length end? Without being able to physically measure, it appears it could be entering the circle of the cul-de-sac. I am surveyed, so I know where the edge of the street is to my property line. Seven twenty-three sits on the circle of the cul-de-sac. I am the last house before the circle. The property edge line varies in length due to this and the length is somewhat shorter. This variance shows on the map on the auditor site. It is very important that the diameter of the circle of the cul-de-sac not be allowed to be shortened. The city refuge truck can barely make the turn now. I actually sat out there Monday morning and videoed them. You'd have, I don't even know how he can do it, all this maneuvering back and forth to get everybody's trash picked up every week. And also seven twenty-two, who has signed my letter, needs full space to back out of her drive and turn around. Plus, vehicles entering Kyle Court by mistake need to be able to drive around the circle to exit Kyle Court without using private drives to do so. The city of Bowling Green laws state a cul-de-sac turning circle diameter is a hundred and twenty feet, radius is right away. All cul-de-sacs are considered a fire lane. Can seven twenty-three Kyle Court actually be allowed to take any of the existing road? We do have this concern. I ask that the planning board consider all of our concerns when making their decision on the variance request. There's an addendum at the bottom of this letter, which I gave him a copy. It says, I agree with the concerns stated in the above document, signed by Eileen Losh, seven two-six Kyle Court. She did get a letter from you. And also the residence at seven twenty-two, Brandy Losh, and there was a letter sent to that residence also. Brandy does not own the home, but she has lived there as a renter for approximately fifteen years. Okay, and the two people that emailed, you are, you are right, it really doesn't affect them. One lives on the other side of me. They have a huge drive. Their company never goes down around the circle. And the address at Haskins, their drive and everything is off of Haskins Road. It's just the backyard. So especially this concern about if the drive's longer than, you know, and goes into there. My picture looks a little bit different than your picture that I took. May I show this? It's on my.
If you may.
I just wanted to show how short it is. So how, and the circle's right here, so we're concerned about how far it's really gonna be to get forty feet.
Thank you.
Tilt it down a little bit.
This is still on there, yeah.
I will, I will give it to you.
That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Is your house to the immediate west of?
I don't know my directions. Yeah, I would say it's west. The east is over at the university. I'm right next door.
Okay.
The grass is, the grass is between.
With the truck in that.
Yeah, that's, that's my sport trap.
Okay.
Yeah, the grass is between her property and my property.
Okay.
I was, I must admit, I did not notice no parking signs on Kyle Court when I visited.
They, they were put in. I can't give you the exact date because we put up with a, you really wanna know for about.
Let me ask, I'm asking the city, but are, are there no parking signs on the cul-de-sac or just on the, on the main part of the street? Do you know, Heather?
I believe it's the cul-de-sac, but I can't say that hundred percent certainty.
There's two signs. It starts at the first house on the street and ends at Eileen's house. At seven.
I know regardless, it's a very narrow street, cause I talked to the public works director about this because he was happy to see the permit because they've had so many complaints about parking on the cul-de-sac and the road because it's so narrow. So he was happy to see someone doing a solution because of the, the complaints he's received. So that's when I talked to him about this and what he told me. So I apologize, I should have looked closer into the no parking.
If anybody parks on the street, if a car is entering or exiting, they have to go through someone's lawn to get around it.
Ms. Strasbaugh, have you had problems with cars parking on the cul-de-sac?
Yes. And that's when the signs went up.
So it seems to me that wouldn't this benefit you by getting cars off the cul-de-sac?
Not if the forty feet is gonna go out into the circle of the cul-de-sac. And I can't step onto the property to measure, so honestly, we don't know. But if you visualize it.
Okay, you answered my question.
Looks like it's gonna be short.
You answered my question, thanks.
You, you did ask a question and I would like to ask that, is, she wants to be sure that she understands the variance plan and she said, is the wall around the trash cans being removed? And the eighteen-foot starts at the side of the house? No.
The driveway is, they're taking out.
Come to the microphone.
You wanna come to the microphone, please?
They're taking out the existing driveway, which you see in that photo. They're extending it out. That, I have my gas meter right there, so that cannot be, you know, the, the asphalt cannot be put there.
Okay.
So no, that.
Okay, thank you.
So how, may I ask the question? To, may I ask you a question? How wide is your drive really gonna end up being then? What width? I know how far you wanna come in the grass, but how much width will your total drive be?
Forty. Forty feet.
No, that's length.
The existing, the, so it's eleven feet plus the seven feet that you see in the photo. It'll be eighteen feet total.
I, I don't even think you can open the car doors.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give this to the city so, to put into the record, so. Do you, do you have something in addition?
Oh, do you have anything?
Ms. Doster, yeah, I do, one more thing. I noticed when we were talking about the no parking signs on the cul-de-sac and you were shaking your head.
So there, so at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a no parking sign if snow exceeds two inches, which is a, a typical cul-de-sac sign. I lived on a cul-de-sac before I bought this house. The no parking signs are on the north side of the house or the street. So when I talked to the city, the public works director yesterday, he said technically we can park on the south side of the street, but because it's such a narrow street, someone that's parking on either side of the street, you, I mean, it's, it's very narrow. So again, there's no parking. That's why I'm requesting this variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm still, I'm gonna clarify this for myself. So there is parking on the street, just no parking on the cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Okay.
No, there's.
Is the sign on the cul-de-sac?
Sign says for two inches.
No, but there's also two more signs that says no parking this side of the street.
Wait, 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 you need to come, you need, ma'am, you need to come back up to the microphone so that you can be heard.
The sign that she says exists.
Use the microphone.
Use the microphone.
But there's two more signs.
Use the microphone, please?
There's two more signs on the north side that are in front of Mrs. Losh's home, right across the street from me. And one going back towards Haskins says no parking this side of the street. So technically, I guess you could park on my side of the street, but what happens is then, they can't get through. They, first of all, you couldn't get out the first house because the fire hydrant is there and a tree and it's not giving you the width of a vehicle to get through with a vehicle parked. See what I mean? And then you would have to go, after that, you'd have to go through someone's lawn because the street's only fourteen feet, four inches wide. That's the problem.
Okay.
Okay? Do you understand better now?
Yes, and the court reporter has, was able to record that.
I'm sorry, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I, when I drove down the street, it looked like a lot of the driveways don't, they, the driveways are wider than the garages on that street. It would look like the driveway, Ms. Strasbaugh's driveway.
That was like that when I bought the home.
I, I understand, I understand. But it looked like a lot of driveways are wider or out of our current at least building, so.
I mean, we even have one gravel drive on our street.
That other people on that street have, have used to solve a problem. I don't know why we would, I have no issue with, with Emily doing this.
May I, may I ask one more question? If the variance gets approved, then is someone gonna come and measure the forty feet and be sure? Cause that doesn't have anything to do with the so-called variance. That's what Jamie told me. So she said that she thinks that possibly if it got approved, then public works department gets involved and they decide how far the drive can go out.
Yes.
It's not like she's trying to, she's not trying to take over the road. She's just trying to widen her driveway.
Yeah. That would, that would be true. I mean, public works will not let them come out and park in the.
So they will make her stop the length where it is now? Because she's at the edge of the circle. That makes me feel better because we're very worried about that.
No, they would, they would, public works would not allow her to pull out into the, into the road.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
These driveway variances are tough and normally I'm not in favor of them. I will say that the eighteen-foot width that you're proposing, as a former developer, eighteen feet's fine. A parking space is normally, the development standard is a hundred and eighty square feet, which could be nine by twenty or ten by eighteen, so that's not a problem. The fact that you're replacing the existing driveway, you're tearing that up and putting down new asphalt or concrete, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think that the, the tight radius of that cul-de-sac is no fault of your own, whether or not you knew about it before you bought the property or not. But that goes to your practical difficulty that we have to consider when we're, we're talking about this variance. The, the fact that on-street parking can take place on one side of the street. Ms. Strabach, Strasbaugh, I appreciate your concern, but it seems to me that maybe you're testifying against your own interest a little bit because I feel like what she's proposing to do is going to help solve your problem, not add to it. So those are my comments on the situation.
Anything else? If not, I'm going to, hearing nothing else, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Gentlemen, would you like to discuss it among ourselves? So anybody have anything they'd care to say?
I'm, I'm for it. She's approving it and trying to help the parking, alleviate the parking.
It's an extremely tiny street, as I was trying to get through the cul-de-sac today.
Yeah, parking is an issue all over town. And when anybody wants to put something to try to make it better, ease up on other people in lieu of parking in grass or where they're not supposed to be is not a, that's a small thing.
Okay. I'm gonna close, I'll come back into the public hearing and may I have a motion, please?
I move. Seconded.
Did you get that, Mr. Secretary?
Yeah.
You call the roll, please?
Kobe Johnson.
Yes.
Rod Noble.
Yes.
David Flager.
Yes.
Jay Sockman, yes. Jeff Crawford.
Yes.
Tim Emmert.
Yes.
Judy Anis.
Yes. Your request for your variance has been granted. The next one is Robert Gidius, on behalf of property owner Jerry Hunt, Hunter of eight hundred Savoy Avenue, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a nine-foot by forty-five-foot driveway extension and seven-foot by ten-foot parking pad, which would be seven feet wider than the maximum width allowed based on the width of the garage to which it leads. Heather?
Thank you. Under the zoning code section one fifty point seven-two, off-street parking, A, location of off-street parking under number three, where serving a one-unit or two-unit dwelling use, a driveway may not exceed a width of ten feet or the width of a garage to which it leads, whichever is greater. Here's an aerial view of the property. As you can see, it's basically at the intersection of Savoy Avenue and then South Savoy Avenue. at the intersection of Savoy Avenue and then South Savoy Avenue. Using pictometry, here's a view of the front and the side of the property. Here's a view of the front of the property, looking at the other side, and then the rear yard. Here's a picture of the front of the property. Another picture there, a little closer in and between the neighboring property. Another view of the existing driveway, and then another view of the front with the driveway. I think that might be a repeat. I'm sorry. We got a lot of pictures. Here is the sketch that was part of your packet that shows the driveway expansion. As you can see, in this case, it's a little different because they don't plan on taking it entirely to the road. So, in this case, they wouldn't need any type of permit from Public Works, only for any work in the city right-of-way. So, I just want to clarify, because I think people get a little confused by that, and this appears to be all private property work. In this circumstance, we did not receive any emails, phone calls, or written correspondence. An advertisement was placed. The newspaper of general circulation is required. A site notice was placed at the site. The other notices required by the Ministry of Code are posted in the proper time and location. A letter was mailed first-class mail to the tax mailing address of the owner and adjoining property owners. Therefore, all the issued requirements for the hearing have been met.
Thank you. Mr. Giddis? State your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Robert Giddis. You probably don't want my address.
Yes, I do.
Because I'm representing, but you do, 1406 Kensington Boulevard in Bowling Green. And I'm representing Jerry Hunt. Says Hunter in some of your writing, but it's not Hunter, it's Hunt.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
The pastor of Word of Truth Christian Church. And this request is just to alleviate the congestion of cars. He only has three, but he gets, being a pastor, he does get several people that visit. And even when he wants to get something out of his garage, it's in the garage, and two cars are sitting there. And I'm sure some of us know how that is. You have to shuffle the cars around. In his case, he's on a curve, and this would allow him to park at least two or three more vehicles on this offset and not be on the street on the curb, which is kind of a safety concern. But, yeah, and the whole driveway is going to get torn out and redone along with this addition.
Okay. Gentlemen, anyone else here that wishes to address this? Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Yeah. What's the purpose of the storage pad?
He has a little pop-up camper that he would like to store alongside of his garage. Mr. Giddis, again, these driveway requests for me are kind of tough. My concern with this one is that your practical difficulty, which is something we have to find, I kind of get that with, you know, wanting more space because the driveway is narrower than what I consider to be standard. But I think the excessive, or the 25-foot width that he's requesting is a little excessive.
Yeah, I do, too.
And what I could see is, and one of the things that we have to ask ourselves, is can the owner's predicament feasibly be alleviated without a variance? And I think if you expanded the width of that driveway by the 2 feet that you have from the garage to the corner of the house, that'd give you 18 feet, which is enough room to park two cars side-by-side, and then if you have the length. So, I don't see that going the 25-foot width really gets you anything. You can, without even needing a variance, other than for the parking, I mean, the storage pad, you could do it without a variance by just expanding to that 2-foot width that you have available there to the north or to the...
Yeah, to the north.
Turned around on that.
To the north of the garage.
And I understand that, and I respect what you're saying. This, by adding that extra 7 or 9 feet, it actually moves those additional vehicles out of the way of the garage so he can come and go out of the garage as needed. So, you're going to get, in 25 feet, you're going to be able to essentially park three cars side-by-side? I suppose you could. That would be tight.
Yeah, I agree. It would be tight.
It's like 6 and 1/3 foot, right? My math is correct. I don't know if you could do that or not.
Yeah, it'd be close.
So, that goes back to my point where I think you could do this without a variance and still meet a development standard if you just went out to the 18 feet that you wouldn't even need a variance for. So, that's what I... Again, though, I'm tough on driveway requests.
I know. I was afraid of that when you said that.
He really wants the parking pad for his...
He does.
That's, I mean, that's what it comes down to, I think.
I think so, too. I was going to ask, but thank you.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Right.
And plus, it just gives him more room to maneuver. Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I interrupted you. Excuse me.
Yeah, and I just, I look at the neighbor, kind of did the same thing with coming off the side there, but visually, I don't think it's bad. I understand what you're saying, but that would be nice for him to have that extra width.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions or comments?
Well, I mean, I can comment now. I, myself, don't have a problem with it just because, you know, it is in the corner of the street. I mean, none of the neighbors really mind. I mean, if he wants to put a pad and get the pop-up out of the way, I mean, I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Heather, he could do the, he could do the storage pad without the driveway variance, correct?
Well, I think the issue would become that getting the pop-up to the storage area because it would still be wider than the garage.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to close the public. And gentlemen, you want to discuss it amongst yourselves?
May I?
Please.
We've all probably been over there to see, and I understand why, for two reasons probably, why he would want to have that pad along the side of the garage more than anything else. One, because he's got a big trailer beside him, which is in front, and so it blocks a lot of the view of everything. And he would probably want to tuck his back away to get it out of the way, and also to not block the use of his driveway that he just got expanded. It would be sitting in the way of the purpose of him trying to expand the drive. So, I understand why he's doing that. It's a matter of whether we think it's appropriate for that to happen. So, I'm not lobbying in that case. I'm just trying to make sure that we understand. I think the real motive is that it's the place for that trailer to be slid alongside the garage, and to do so, you need the extra width of the driveway to back your vehicle and get that trailer in that spot.
My issue with that, Hobie, though, is the hardship is that he can't park his camper.
That's what it comes down to.
That would be the hardship.
That's a reality.
That's what I'm bringing up. That's, I don't believe is a hardship as defined by what we're having a problem with here.
Any other comments?
When I look at even the picture, I mean, the neighbor has done a similar thing. He's extended his garage. I don't like to speculate on a motive other than what's written on the sheet, and the motive doesn't say to park the camper there.
As gentleman said.
Propose storage pad.
He should have, yeah, that that was part of it, but I guess when I look at it, when I've driven by it, I thought it seems like a very reasonable request to me.
Okay. Anything else? All right. May I have a motion, please?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will the secretary call the roll?
Rod Noble?
No.
David Flager?
No.
Jay Sockman?
Yes.
Jeff Crawford?
Yes.
Tim Emmer?
Yes.
Judy Anis?
Yes.
Hobie Johnson?
Yes.
Your request for your variance has been granted, sir. Okay. I believe that's all the variance requests we have, so we're going to move back up to election of officers. Rod Noble met with me and told me that he has secured the votes of five board members to be chairperson, so all I have to do is just nominate him, and that's what I'm doing right now. And may I have a second to that nomination for Rod Noble to be the chair?
Hold on, hold on. Hold on a second.
Sorry, Jay.
Still writing on the old one. Okay. All right. Who's second? Anyone second?
I was going to say, I still need a second. It's out there.
I'll second.
Okay, Jay Sockman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Mr. Noble is now the chairperson. He also informed me that Tim Emmerich is going to be the vice-chairperson. So, I will nominate Tim. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Congratulations, Tim. And Jay, bless your heart. You agreed to be secretary again.
No knowledge of such.
So, that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, congratulations. Our officers, Rod, Tim, and Jay. And now, there's lobby visitation. Is there anybody here who would like to visit with us? Hearing none, I will entertain...
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Bill. Visit with us.
Yes, William Harold, 1030 County Road Avenue.
You could have left a long time ago.
I just wanted to thank Judy. I think we all appreciate the, not just the way that she conducts these meetings, but the consistency as well as the enthusiasm. So, I personally want to thank you for doing that, and...
Now, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Judy, I'd also like to say thank you for your service and time as chairman and your experience, and I think we all look forward to working with you in the future and having benefit of your experience and wisdom, and thank you.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure. These are some of the finest gentlemen I've ever had to have been working with, and I would like to say it's particular thanks to my vice-chairman, who is one of the finest people I've ever met, Mr. Johnson. And you've been such a good secretary, Jay. A little slow at times, but a good secretary.
I am slow. Aren't we all?
Yeah, we are. All right. There is, we are now adjourned, and please don't leave until you sign the paperwork. Thank you all very much.